Okay, I see we're live now. Well, welcome everybody to the Federal Way City Council Meeting, a special meeting for November 17th of 2020. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Due to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
And one nation.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right. That was pretty darn near perfect. Wow, now we're just showing off. All right. Welcome, everybody. Okay, so for this study session, we are going to have presentations from Sound Transit. We're going to operate in operation and maintenance facility, otherwise known as OMF, for South and Tacoma Dome Link Extension Schedule Update. We'll have a staff report introduction by Ryan Midland, a city liaison to Sound Transit, and then Sound Transit Representatives Kirby Hawkins, Project Development Director, and Gwen McCullough, OMF South Development Manager. So with that, I will turn it over to Ryan.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and Council Members. As the mayor said, tonight we have Sound Transit staff to provide an update on the project's status and schedule for the OMF South and Tacoma Dome Link Extension. Before I pass it off to them, I just wanted to note that this meeting was originally scheduled in hopes that it would align with the publication of the draft environmental impact statement for OMF South. That has since been, that publication has not happened. So just as a friendly reminder that because our comments are important to get into the record on this, on these projects, that any comments we make tonight that we want to carry forward, we'll want to make again once that DEIS is published. So with that reminder, I will pass it off to Andrew Austin, who is here from Sound Transit.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. I'm Andrew Austin, Government Affairs Manager with Sound Transit. And just to clarify, the presenters tonight will be me and Kirby Hawkins doing most of the talking, who you already introduced, Mayor. I'm going to start my slideshow, just to make sure that's working. Just give me one second. There's Kirby. Can you all see that okay?
Yes.
Great. I'm just going to make a few, and Chelsea Levy are High Capacity Development Director for the South Corridor, also on the line to join us. So just going to make a few introductory comments before I hand it over to Kirby. Like Ryan mentioned, we will be giving updates on the Tacoma Dome Link Extension project, TDL-E and the OMF South project. Most of the updates you'll hear today are things similar to what we've updated you previously on the project. Probably the biggest new thing you'll see is an updated environmental schedule. So because of everything that's been going on, our environmental schedule has changed. So that will probably be the biggest piece of new information. We'll also update you on ongoing outreach with potentially impacted properties since we spoke to you about a year ago. And then I'll jump back in and just give you a high-level overview on what's happening with our realignment process, which is Sound Transit's process to the board to potentially change our project timelines and delivery schedules due to the COVID-19 recession and the financial picture. And then we should have plenty of time for questions. So with that, Kirby, I will go to the next slide and turn it over to you.
All right, hopefully everyone can hear me now. Andrew, if you can, give me a thumbs up. All right, thank you, sir. Again, I'm Kirby Hawkins. I'm Project Development Director for Sound Transit, working on the OMF South project as well as TDL-E. So today we'll give you an update on OMF South, and then we'll give you a quick update on TDL-E, just to make sure we kind of cover our bases on both of these projects. And so right now, the OMF South project is currently in the process of an environmental review. So more specifically, we're preparing a draft environmental impact statement, or BEIS. This slide illustrates our environmental review schedule. So although we are not in a comment period now, a public comment for the official record will be taken at each of the project milestones indicated on this slide. COVID-19 has impacted Sound Transit's finances and our ability to advance our environmental review internally and with our planning partners. Consequently, the environmental schedule for the OMF South facility has been affected as a result. We now anticipate publishing the OMF South draft EIS in early 2021. Once public, excuse me, once published, the public will have an opportunity to formally review and comment on the draft environmental impact statement during that public comment period. The Sound Transit Board is anticipated to identify a preferred alternative in mid-2021. And then after the FEIS is issued, the final EIS is issued in early to mid-2022. The Sound Transit Board will then select a project to be built around the timeframe of mid to late 2022. If we can go to the next slide, please. So we'll start with a little background on the OMF facility as a great reminder of what this project is. It's an operations and maintenance facility. We call it OMF for short. The actual project is the OMF South. It supports a safe, clean, and comfortable ride for our passengers for link light rail. It supports links vehicles, which must be cleaned and stored nightly and regularly put out of service for their routine maintenance. The facility houses staff and equipment for train operations, station, and track maintenance as well. So as a reminder, the OMF South must be strategically located in the south corridor to support the light rail system throughout the region, particularly as our light rail system will eventually triple in size. So Sound Transit needed to have four operation and maintenance facilities in our service area. So the one we're talking about today is the operations and maintenance facility in the south. We have an existing central facility. We have one that is under construction in the east in Belleville, excuse me, Bellevue. And then we will need a fourth facility on the north side of our service area as well. The OMF staff will support Sound Transit's regional needs and will be used to store over 140 light rail vehicles and equipment. This facility will also employ approximately 470 skilled staff. Additionally, these workers will have living wage jobs. The average wage at our existing facility, for example, is over $40 per hour. The OMF South must be ready for light rail vehicles to be delivered, tested, and ready prior to the openings of the West Seattle and Tacoma, Tacoma Dome extensions. If you can go to the next slide. We've shared this graphic before. This graphic illustrates our evaluation process. So previously, we briefed you about our evaluation process in great detail. We do recognize that there are new council members. So we just wanted to kind of remind you of the process again briefly and how we currently arrived at the sites that we're evaluating today. We initiated our evaluation in early scoping in 2018. At that time, we asked the community to provide us with their thoughts of possible sites for an OMF. As a result of that, there were a range of 24 sites that were identified, potential sites that were identified. Between mid-2018 through late 2018, we conducted and completed an evaluation of those 24 sites. Information about the environmental, operational, and cost factors for each of those sites was collected and analyzed by a team of environmental planners, engineers, and other technical staff. One of the key operational factors that was part of that analysis was that the site did need to be connected to an active light rail line at the time that the facility is opened. So therefore, the sites needed to be within 1.5 miles of the Federal Way Link Extension Track, because that track would be active and operating at the time that this facility would be open. Based on the results of the detailed screening, six sites were recommended for further consideration and for a public comment at the scoping period that was initiated in February 2019. We presented the results of scoping and the public comments that were received to our Sound Transit Board of Directors in May of 2019, at which time the board took action on which sites to study in the draft EIS. If we can go to the next slide, please. The action that the board took in 2019 resulted in the identification of three sites for study in the EIS. Those sites were located at the Midway Landfill in the city of Kent and two locations in Federal Way that you see illustrated on the screen here. So the DEIS was initiated after that time, and technical work to complete that DEIS is currently being undertaken and still is ongoing. As we've advanced our plan and design efforts, we've also advanced our understanding of how the sites will be best laid out. We've evaluated the programing needs for the facility. We've adjusted the site boundaries to accommodate some of the essential program elements and the unique conditions at each of the sites. We've also hosted a series of workshops with our agency partners, including the cities and regulatory agencies, including staff from the city of Federal Way to address the ongoing settlement of soils at Midway Land, at the Midway Landfill Site, because it's a unique situation there. And lastly, we conducted public outreach last fall to keep the public informed and updated on project activities during the EIS process. And I'll talk more about that in a moment. If you can go to the next slide, please. So just a little bit more about the EIS process. So we're studying the potential environmental impacts for each of these categories that you see on the screen and for each of the sites. And EIS studies both the built environment, such as the impacts on low-income and minority populations and economic effects, and the natural environment as well, such as impacts to wetlands and sensitive areas. So the results of the analysis for each of the sites will be identified and compared in the draft environmental impact statement. So we do not have the results of this evaluation now. This information is still being developed and prepared to be published early next year in the draft environmental impact statement. If we can go to the next slide. As previously mentioned, the OMF South will employ approximately 470 skilled staff. We'll point out that these will be new hires, and these are essential jobs as well. This won't be a remote workforce. These individuals that work will be onsite, and they're critical for the operating light rail system. Because they will be onsite and have to report to work each day as needed, this will be a benefit to the local businesses and the economy surrounding wherever the site is located. The workers at the OMF will have a living wage job, as I've mentioned. The average wage at our existing facility is $40 an hour or $83,000 per year. And this OMF will also have a training facility. So we're enacting conversations with King County Metro to explore the development of apprenticeship program to get local residents into these high-paying union career jobs. If we can go to the next slide. This slide provides information on the type of jobs that are, that will be working out of the OMF. The largest group of employees here are LRV operators, light rail vehicle operators. They make up about 30% of the jobs. These jobs typically work during the day, but they also work swing shifts into the afternoon into the evening. The second largest group are LRV maintenance workers, and they make up about 20% of the jobs there. And they work primarily the evening shift through overnight shifts. In addition to outside apprenticeship possibilities, there is also opportunities for internal promotion through the suite of jobs as well. So the great thing about this is you can come in, for example, as a person that cleans vehicles, and you can acquire training to move up to a person that maintains vehicles, does the vehicle maintenance, which is a higher-paying position, requires more skills. So not only a great opportunity to start at this facility, but a great opportunity to grow and advance your career if you do work here. And again, all of this goes back to a benefit to the local economy wherever this site is located. If you can go to the next slide. So Sound Transit has worked to keep the community aware of this project. Last fall, we conducted extensive outreach using online and in-person drop-in sessions. This slide illustrates our overall outreach on this project since November of 2019. And I'll touch on a few points regarding this outreach. We've sent over six email updates on our OMF South listserv. That listserv consists of over 4,000 subscribers. We've mailed over 45,000 postcards announcing our outreach. And those postcards go to individual homes, apartments, and businesses. There were more than 1,600 unique visitors to our online version of our drop-in sessions. And we hosted five in-person drop-in sessions with more than 250 in-person visitors or attendees at those drop-in sessions. Obviously, that was pre-COVID. Those drop-in sessions were held in Federal Way, at the Federal Way Library, Federal Way Performance Arts Center, and the Federal Way Community Center, and then other locations in Kent, Des Moines, in the Kent, Des Moines area. We also held multiple community briefings, including for Garagetown, Pacific Christian Academy, the Multi-Service Center, Hope Links Mobility Management, for example. And then to, you know, others in the Kent West Hill Council area, for example. If we can go to the next slide. Additionally, we had field visits to properties occurring in early 2020, including to potentially impacted parcels within the site alternative boundaries and neighboring properties to the northeast and south. The stats that you see on the screen now is the outreach that we've done specifically in Federal Way. The information provided as part of these field visits included basic information about the OMF South project and the next chance to provide comments during the project's draft EIS comment period, which I've talked about. The team collected email contacts if they were willing to provide in order to send out future email updates to keep them in the loop. As of now, the Sound Transit Engagement Team is conducting phone follow-ups with potential impacted properties to communicate the changes to the EIS schedule. A project update was recently sent to the email listserv that also communicated these changes. If we can go to the next slide. Talking more about our upcoming outreach. To notify the public about the draft EIS publication next year, early next year, the project's engagement team will employ a variety of strategies that are listed on this screen. Prior to the draft EIS comment period, formal letters from Sound Transit will be sent to potentially impacted property owners. This letter will notify these property owners that their parcel has been identified in the draft EIS as being one that is potentially impacted by the OMF South project. This letter will not be an indication that the agency will need to purchase the property. It's really more informing them so that they can be aware and be prepared to review the DIS and provide comment. In addition, the letter will invite property owners to reach out to Sound Transit's engagement team if there are any questions or if they would like to set up a meeting to discuss further. Additional phone follow-ups will also be made at that particular time. So if we can go to the next slide. So I'm going to now go into the Tacoma Dome Link Extension project and just give you a quick rundown of that project as well. So the TDL-E project is currently also in the process of a draft EIS schedule. And if you remember, Tacoma Dome Link Extension, or TDL-E for short, it's an extension of link light rail beyond the Federal Way Link Extension. That project, which is under construction currently, will end just south of the Federal Way Transit Center. So this project will extend that service south. TDL-E is an approximate 10-mile corridor. There are four station segments, station areas, and they're indicated on the screen in these call-out boxes that you see. Those areas are in South Federal Way, five, and then we have two potential station areas in the Tacoma area. In July of 2019, the Sound Transit Board of Directors identified a preferred alternative and other alternatives to study in a draft environmental impact statement. A preferred alternative is not a decision on the project to be built, but rather the identification of a preferred alternative shows the preference for an alternative based on the currently available information from the alternatives development process. For your reference on this map, the preferred alternative is identified by the green alignments on these maps. So the draft environmental impact statement will evaluate all alternatives equally, including a no-build alternative. The preferred alternative identified by the board primarily runs on the west and north side of I-5. And I'll talk more detail about South Federal Way in a moment, but just thinking, talking quickly about five, there's one station identified in five. West of the five station, there's three alignment options. And then continuing down the alignment, we do need to cross over the Puayalup River as part of TDL-E and then into the Tacoma Dome area where we have two stations identified, including one at Portland Avenue and then one in the Tacoma Dome area. If we can go to the next slide. Looking at the South Federal Way Station area in a little more detail. As the alignment leaves the terminus of the Federal Way Link Extension just south of the Transit Center there, heading south, it will travel underneath the BPA power lines, which we must raise to get under. And then the alignment approaches the west side of I-5. We're evaluating two alignment alternatives in the vicinity of the Belmar Park Mobile Home, Mobile Home Park near South 324th Street. And then the alignment continues along the west side of I-5, approaching a split between alternatives in the segment, South Federal Way segment area. There are two station location alternatives in the South Federal Way, and then one design option. If we can go to the next slide. This slide shows the station alternatives in a little more detail. So the SF Enchanted Parkway Station is the preferred alternative. Again, that's along the green-colored alignment there. It would be an elevated station with a platform that would be along the west side of Enchanted Parkway, north of South 352nd Street. We're also looking at a station option that is being evaluated in this location. And that is the SF 352nd Span Station option. This would be also located on the west side of Enchanted Parkway at 352nd. But this would be an elevated platform spanning over South 352nd Street. So entrances would be located on both the northwest and southwest corners of the intersection over that, over that street. The SFI-5 station would be located adjacent to the new Southbound Alfrant that is being constructed as part of Washdott's Triangle Improvement Project. The station location is in the area where the current Jet Chevrolet is located. The station platform would also be elevated. For any of these station options or alternatives, I should say, we are evaluating 500 parking stalls as well, which could either be in a garage or a surface parking configuration. This project just wrapped up an online open house, which ended November 2nd. So the focus of that online open house was to share station design information and talk about the non-motorized and transit access to the station. We received over 3,300 unique visitors to the online open house, specifically in the South Federal Way, at the South Federal Way Station. The feedback we received included 61 comments regarding station design and 37 responses related to the non-motorized access projects. We're putting together a comprehensive outreach summary that will be posted on our website to talk about, you know, all the feedback that we received as part of that open house. If we can go to the next slide, please. Similar to the OMF South schedule, the TDL-E schedule is impacted by COVID-19. We now anticipate publishing the TDL-E EIS in early 2022. Once published, the public will have the opportunity to review and comment formally on the draft EIS during the public comment period. The Sound Transit Board has been anticipated to confirm or revise the alternative in mid-2022. So this action for TDL-E is different than the OMF South. So the OMF South currently does not have a preferred alternative. So when the OMF South reaches the conclusion of the DEIS early next year, the board will identify the preferred alternative at that time. But for TDL-E, which already has a preferred alternative, at the conclusion of the DEIS, the board action will be to confirm or revise the preferred alternative. So slight differences between these two projects in that sense. After the final EIS is issued in mid to late 2023, again, this is for TDL-E, the board will select the project to be built, which will take place then in mid to late 2023. Kind of the last point I wanted to point out is that there is a difference between the OMF South and TDL-E in a sense of how these projects could be funded as well. So TDL-E is seeking federal funds. So OMF South is seeking, will use only local funds. So since TDL-E is seeking federal funds, that means FTA, the Federal Transit Administration, is the actual lead agency for the Tacoma Dome Link Extension project. So at the conclusion of the environmental process for TDL-E, FTA will issue the Record of Decision. And so next slide, I will turn it over to Andrew to talk about realignment.
Thanks, Kirby. So I'm just going to give a high-level overview around what's going on with realignment. Realignment is the word we use for looking at our expansion plan, build-out timelines and projects due to the COVID-19 recession. I won't have details today on the implications specifically for the two projects you just heard about, but I will have timelines and process for how those decisions will be made. So just as an overview, guiding our realignment process is Sound Transit's values, collaboration, customer focus, inclusion, respect, safety, integrity, and quality, and our strategic priorities. So we're using our board-adopted strategic planning as a lens to look at our whole realignment picture. I'll go through this slide in detail, but uh the chart on the right um shows where our uh funding for um the agency comes from. Uh, and this is just to illustrate that when Sound Transit Three was passed, it's not like we just got a big chunk of money to deliver it, just like all other local government were funded through a variety of um revenue sources and taxes, with sales tax being the biggest biggest, and then debt being a big, big uh piece in terms of the capital expansion build-out. Um, so those, that's a, that'll, we're collecting those over the course of the Sound Transit Three build-out. Um, and that's built into our financial plan. So just like many local governments, um, a lot of these uh funding sources have been hit by the recent uh drop in economic activity with sales tax being one of the more volatile sources of funding. So what we're looking at, we don't know exactly what this means uh for the long-term implications of our budget. It's a, it's a moving target that our smart finance team is continually looking at, but uh likely to reduce revenue by three hundred and ten to four hundred and thirty-six million in the twenty twenty to twenty twenty biennium. The current estimate, which could change, uh, looks, is looking at a six billion dollar reduction of revenues through twenty forty-one. And like I said, these are estimates that could go up or down depending on um how fast the economic recovery is or isn't. So two big things that are uh impacting our our build-out plan is that um lower revenues uh have long-term financial financial implications for our ability to build out the system on the timeline promised to the voters. And then a key limit here is our statutory debt limit. So just like cities, uh Sound Transit is, has a statutory debt limit that's based upon the total valuation of property taxes in our district. Uh, and we can't cross that statutory debt limit without a change in legislative law. Uh, so it's not like in in places where we are already sort of close to um that limit prior to the recession, we can't just go out and get um more debt to fund the program uh because we have to stay under that statutory debt limit. And I apologize if it's loud, it's starting to rain very hard here in Tacoma where I am. Um, so the near-term priorities is in terms of what the agency and the board is looking at um is all, everything under construction right now uh is moving forward as planned. That's great news, especially for Federal Way Link Extension, which is on the next slide. Everything else, uh including the two projects you just heard about, are subject to this realignment process that will take place. And the goal is for the board to go through this whole process and make these realignment decisions by July twenty twenty-one. So just briefly, these are everything that's currently under construction and not impacted um by this realignment uh process, including Federal Way Link Extension and a few others in the um South Corridor. So as the board looks at tools to manage this affordability challenge, they really have three major tools. Uh, one is delaying project completion, which allows them to manage that debt load and the revenue income over time, modify the project scope, uh or secure their new funding um from from funding partners. Should there be a federal stimulus, for example, uh that would definitely help us in in closing that gap that that the recession brought. So what has happened so far is the board has adopted um criteria for how to evaluate these projects. And I won't spend too much time going through each of these. I think uh your staff has this presentation, happy to talk uh about it in more detail. But basically, they're looking at kind of what are the um, what are the things through which staff can uh study these realignment decisions and and put a lens on it for board decisions? Things like socioeconomic equity, ridership potential, um completing the spine uh and and other measures. So that's what the board has already adopted for um the criteria through which to evaluate realignment. Going forward, um, this is our general timeline. So they adopted that criteria for discussion and for um for evaluation back in June. Uh, they have made decisions on some short-term actions that needed to take place or not take place uh in order to keep some projects moving and get more information. Um, neither T D L E or OMF South were impacted by those decisions, but that did happen this year. And then into next year, we'll kick off a robust um public engagement around this um with stakeholders, jurisdictions, and the public. And then, as I mentioned, that will all drive towards a comprehensive realignment decision by the board in July. Um, and and we also did some important public engagement before uh those criteria were adopted with local jurisdictions. There was a region-wide um mayoral town hall, uh stakeholder engagement. We want to be really um transparent and uh engaging as much as we can in the virtual environment, uh both now in the space of the realignment and going forward, because we know it's important to a lot of folks. So so um that's all I have. I think we're uh open to take it for questions, and that's all to say, you know, what it means for these two projects will really come down to um that that those board decisions next summer.
All right, uh, thank you very much. Okay, I see uh three questions so far. Uh, in order will be Councilmember Sephardosan, then Councilmember Berusa, and then Councilmember Moore. Let's start off with Councilmember Sephardosan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Um, I hope you can hear me. Um, so my, it's more of a comment than a question, and um uh thank you for the review because my concern, I go, I'm talking about the O M F location. Um, the fact that we started with so many sites and dwindled down to two sites in Federal Way, and we've said this over and over, um, it's very concerning. Um, our citizens are worried, our residents are worried, and so I still just want to say that um Federal Way should not be considered for that. Um, and yeah, I just wanted to give my feedback um around that. I do appreciate the job creation. However, the displacement is what I'm very much um not in favor of. So um, that's all I wanted to say, and I know we've, we've stated this before. Um, but I think it's very important that you hear it again. Um, so thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Berusa.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Andrew and Kirby, for the presentation. Uh, first of all, I want to uh kind of reiterate with uh my colleagues. Councilmember Sephardosan said too about the two locations, so I wish that would uh get to be thought. And so it's a rethinking about that and move it out of Federal Way and keep it back from midpoint. But that being said, my question is, uh, when we talk about also wherever it goes, um, when you talk about workers, what percentage do you folks have uh for that would be community hire? And then when it in regards to apprenticeships, what is, what is percentage of apprenticeships that you're hiring for this project? Or even for the jobs?
So there's, there's two pieces there. One thing we didn't talk a lot about is um, which we're, we're happy to give you an update on down the road, is we have a really robust um apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship program for our construction jobs. So both of these projects will have construction jobs, and uh those apprenticeship levels will be dictated by um the project labor agreements that Sound Transit has with the um construction labor unions and the contractors. And we have one of the uh best, best programs in the country in terms of getting folks into the trades and into those jobs. That's an important piece. We didn't, we didn't get into the details of it here, but happy to um get into details of that at a later date. On the, on the um apprenticeship programs we did mention and the operations job, um, the, it's sort of a, that we're, we're trying to explore a new partnership between us and King County Metro where we could help them support some of their existing um apprenticeship programs and potentially expand them into South King County. Uh, because these are a lot of jobs, and and unlike the construction jobs, they'll be permanent in this location. So we haven't gotten to the level of detail of percentages at this point, um, because it's really uh, we're having early discussions with with King County, um, who the vast majority of these jobs at this site will actually be King County employees. Um, also, the vast majority of them will be uh represented through unions. So there are good opportunities for tapping into those apprenticeship programs, but we don't have percentages yet. But that will evolve as as we continue to um have those conversations kind of in parallel with this uh work.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Thank you.
Okay, um, Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, Councilmember Berusa took my question, so thank you, Councilmember Berusa. Uh, it's a great question, and the only thing I'll add to it is is um, you, you know, um, you, I, I, I think you guys know where where the city of Federal Way stands on on the O M F site uh and whatnot, and um, but I also just uh really wanted to take the time to to say thank you for thinking outside the box when it comes to apprenticeships, um, opportunities for uh South King County and and for for this project. So uh want to say that that's really, really important uh for our community, and and I'll look forward to working with you guys on on that effort. So I was really pleased to hear about that, and and uh that makes me pretty excited about this project. So thank you so much, guys.
Great, thank you. Council President Honda.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for being here today, Sound Transit. It's good to see you, Chelsea. Haven't seen you for a while. I drove on I five today and drove by the Midway landfill, and there's a bit of work that's been done there. And I saw a lot of dirt that's been moved around. I know that one of the concerns that had been expressed earlier about the Midway landfill was disturbing the um the packed garbage and and how that would be for health um issues and safety of employees. I saw trucks parked um on the top of the the hill that had been dug out. And um, so that site seems to be at least workable at this point. And it it seems to me that that is the site that should be chosen uh for the O M F South. The city of Kent wants it, the city of Federal Way wants it, and I would encourage you to take back to your bosses, and hopefully they can take back to the Sound Transit Board that that is the only right thing to do. It would be a terrible thing for the city of Federal Way to have the middle of our city torn up and have this placed in the middle of our city. As nice as it would be to have four hundred and seventy um well-paying jobs, we're also losing jobs, and I don't see that that's been even discussed here.
Is that it?
Um, no, um,
Okay.
I'm also concerned about how the property owners in Federal Way are being engaged with. This meeting, we found out about as a council about two weeks ago at the L U T C meeting, and it was requested that Sound Transit use their listserv and let the property owners in the area know that this was happening today so they could hear this information, even though if they may have heard it before, it would be nice to include them that since we're their city council and we represent them. And I don't believe that that happened, and um I know you guys as a organization do reach out to the public, and you have a lot of events for the public to come in and hear and get information from you. I think that this was uh something that you could have done a better job with to inform the property owners that this was, this meeting was happening tonight because there is a time for public comment, and they might want to to have that opportunity to to say what they would like to say. So thank you very much.
And and I'm happy to, thank, thank you. I'm happy to comment on that last piece. We had some um good dialogue back and forth with your staff on it. Um, you know, the, the, what was behind that is as generally, we don't um notice other agencies um uh meetings, and also all of the, like you said, all the information that we're, we've given you today, especially on the up-schedule left date, we are communicating to the property owners. Um, and then just in addition, we, we wanted, we want to make clear that there, there, like we talked about, there is going to be this um robust time for public comment where we'll be able to formally hear from everyone. Um, and we didn't want to confuse those two things today, so that was what was behind that decision, but I hear you.
Wow. You know who didn't hear you today are the people that are affected by this. And I'm going to tell you, Andrew, I have was uh just as a, as the mayor of this city that represents a hundred thousand people, was astonished, astonished at your response and really, really disappointed. So um, I've never, I've never heard or seen anything like it. I I have to tell you, it's it was pretty darn near outrageous. So we ask you to reach out, you refuse to, we ask you again, you refuse to again. Shame on you. That's how I feel. And that's how a lot of people that that, you know, it's just when we ask you to reach out to these people that we don't have a complete list of these people, we're depending on you to get this out. This request was made by the elected representatives of the people of the city, and you refused, not once, but twice.
And and I can, and I can assure you, we, we have communicated all of this information to them and happy to share uh the record of those communications uh if you'd like. And of course, we will communicate with them clearly uh for the formal comment period for for this project.
You need to tell Peter Rogoff that about my comments and about our disappointment, please.
I will.
I'm, I'm really surprised that that, that's your response. So, Council, any other questions on that?
Um, Mayor?
Please.
Okay. As elected representatives of this city, uh Andrew and Kirby, we need to represent our citizens. About twenty years ago, the property on Three Thirty-Sixth was slated to become warehouses. We would not accept them, I was on the council at that time, and instead um agreed to have a church at that property because the community in that area exploded. They weren't going to have trucks going through a pristine area. Warehouse is a very pristine area filled with trees and plants and beautiful, beautiful flora and fauna. You, you, you can't do that to our community. You can't come in here, I, I've gone down to the industrial area down in Soto to look at the um O N F facility down there. It looks like a train yard. You can't do that in the middle of a community and take out huge parcels of property, not to mention displaced workers. Uh, so it, it's just absolutely unacceptable to us, and money doesn't matter. I mean, you can't ride over a community, you have to take that back to the Sound Transit Board. You can't ride over ninety-seven thousand people in this community, not to mention another twenty thousand in the surrounding area. They, they won't stand for it. So um, I'm, I know that you're just representatives of Sound Transit, but the board needs to hear what we're saying. So we're all very united, we want the Midway landfill, not our two pieces of property in the middle of our city. Thank you very much.
Okay, Council, anything else?
Um, I have something else.
Uh, Council President Honda?
Thank you. Um, Andrew and Kirby and the, the rest of the Sound Transit group that's here. Um, there's a group of folks with property that will be impacted, could po- potentially be impacted by this and called Garage Town. And I let them know that this meeting was happening. One of the persons that's fighting Sound Transit on this to save their property had to leave town, and he's not getting back until later tonight. He told me that he would have rearranged his trip had he known earlier so that he could have been here for public comment, because that's how important it is to them. And I just need to to make sure that you guys understand that. Anytime we're talking about this, we have to, we have to have our public, our citizens, our businesses know that it's happening. I don't want to hide anything from them. And we're going to hear from people who might watch this, and they'll, they'll say, but I didn't know that was even on the agenda. I, how, how was I supposed to know? You know, it might even be nice if you could share the list of property owners with our staff so that we have that list. Um, so that we could do our, the outreach ourselves if we had to. Thank you. um, so that we could do our, the outreach ourselves if we had to. Thank you.
Okay. Let's hear. Okay, Councilmember Moore, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I, I just, uh, wanted to take the time just to say, um, you know, um, uh, Andrew and Chelsea and, and, uh, Kirby, um, you know, re- really certainly appreciate seeing you guys here and, and obviously, there's, there's a, a lot of, um, this is an important time, you know, and, and I, I know that we're, uh, trying to do our job of advocating for our businesses and, and, um, our far citizens as well, and, uh, but I, I do want to say, speaking for myself, you know, I appreciate you guys being here, appreciate the work that you guys are doing. Uh, and, um, again, um, uh, just, um, um, you know, I, 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 I recognize, as I've always said, that this is a huge opportunity for Federalway, uh, and connectivity. Uh, and so I, I, I value that, and I think this, uh, if done correctly, I, I know that we can grow and, and, um, you know, be a great, uh, uh, be a great connector to, to the next, uh, place, uh, where people are going to, whether it's work or, uh, for tourism. Um, and so, um, you know, there's a balance of, of we got to do our job, but also recognize and, uh, appreciate, especially with the apprenticeship programs, um, just appreciate you guys being here. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, Stephanie, do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. We have Brian Nash on the line. He'd like to give some comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. So hi, I'm Brian Nash. Um, thank you for giving me a moment. I am the Chair of a Political Action Committee called Protect Federalway, formed by citizens in the affected zones of the O M F and of the Federalway Link Extension. Um, I shared with the council some of the signatures and some of the letters and some of the, uh, messages that, um, some of the owners have shared with us. Elinos Yogurt and some of the others have shared with us some of that, um, some of their thoughts. And, um, you know, I, I wanted to, you know, obviously thank the council and the mayor for giving me a moment to speak up and the Sound Transit folks as well, who have been, um, great about a- answering our questions when we've asked. Um, but I think, you know, the, sounds like quite a bit of the council is in agreement with us that while we are excited about the jobs and very excited about, uh, light rail for Federalway that, um, evicting especially that South Three Forty-Fourth site, which has, um, over two hundred and fifty jobs that it represents, a hundred and fifty which are at Elinos Yogurt, which are also living wage jobs, um, and two small churches, one of them with a broadcast tower, um, forty-three small businesses. There's a bunch of stuff there that is important to the community. And so I have over three hundred residents that we've engaged with that have, um, you know, either donated to the political action group or signed a petition or otherwise sent us a letter. Um, and especially the folks whose homes are in these target zones, um, and who can't afford to buy another house in the community for what they would be paid for, paid their, by, paid for their home. So they're really concerned. Um, they're, um, not agitated yet because the deadline isn't here, and they still think they have a chance. And so they really are looking to, um, the council and to Sound Transit, uh, to, you know, hear their voice and make a decision that doesn't push them out of the community. So, um, thank you for, uh, considering that, and I'm happy to share more information or, um, connect with anyone offline who wants to hear more about what they're saying and what we're doing. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Stephanie, do we have any others?
No, Mayor, we just had the one.
Okay, uh, Council, anything, um, any other comments? Okay, well, we want to thank our, uh, Sound Transit, uh, presenters. Thank you very much. Ryan, thank you very much. And, um, uh, we've got our council meeting in thirty-five minutes. Uh, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.